Derek, can we get started, do you think? All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Everybody, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll remain standing for just a moment, we're gonna have a moment of silence for first responders and our friend Ray Halverson, another former supervisor who just passed this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Please be seated. And for the record, Ray was a colleague over in West Goshen, and he'll be missed. This meeting is being recorded via Zoom. The recording will be uploaded later to the township's YouTube channel. And yard waste will not be picked up on July 6th. Please hold all yard waste that week until, this week until July 13th. The board met this evening in an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss personal matters and legal matters. There are no public hearings, and we have no emergency reports. We have no financial reports. And we're moving right along to the minutes and treasurer's reports. We'll do the minutes for June 7th and June 21st of 2022.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve both June 7th and June 21st, 2022 minutes.
Thank you, Cody.
Second motion.
Thanks, Sean. I didn't see any corrections. Did anybody on the board see corrections that need to be made?
Madam Chair, I did note one correction. I know in my own work, July 21st, page 3, line 33, I'll remove some words that say this will cover. Page 3, line 33 on July 21st.
June 21st? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know what I was thinking there.
That was a minor thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that amendment, then, we'll make sure that that is in the record. Are there any questions regarding the minutes from June 7th or June 21st for the room? Or the Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question. Those in favor of passing the minutes with that amendment?
I, I.
No opposed. Thank you. Treasurer's report, Dave?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Treasurer's reports for the weeks, June 16th through 2022 to June 30th, 2022. General fund revenue of this period was driven by the quarterly reimbursements, that is sewer municipal authority and refuse accounts earned income tax receipts as well. Expenses for this period include our annual community day expenses, Applebrook Golf Day, traffic signal maintenance inspections, tree removal, paving materials, and ongoing operating expenses. Capital Reserve Fund incurred expenses of $55,000 for balance due of an approved replacement boom mower. We received the tractor invoice today, $22,000 for construction on Hershey's Mills Dam, $16,000 for implementation costs of the new Edmunds GovTech financial software. The bond fund incurred expenses of $47,000 for East Goshens portion of West Goshen sanitary treatment plan improvements, $7,000 for Milltown Dan Engineering, and $5,000 for Hershey's Mill Dam Engineering. Any questions on the bills?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a few, if I might. Let's see, Dave, if I could ask a few here. Try and get through these quickly. Batch 2 of 6, page 5, total absorption, I think it's called, $2,300. That's for a portable defibrillator, it looks like. Do, I don't know what the inventory is of the portable defibrillators we have here. Is there, and this is not to be penny wise, pound foolish, but do we have enough that for the, the camp session, I presume it's being used for, that we could have one, we could share one, or?
No, we actually had to replace this one as well, just recently.
This was a replacement.
The, the summer camp one is, the one for the Parks and Rec is new, and the, the one that's back there, we temporarily did from Kevin Miller's fire stuff. And now we've got another one coming in, which is a replacement. Yep.
Edwards GovTech, the accounting software, how are we doing with that? Are we, operationally, are we there? Are you getting the service you need for, as we pay these substantial software bills?
Yes, we, we have gotten to implement, we're implementing payroll coming in July. They're doing polls right now. We're doing validation and training on that. That's gonna also be our AP section. Then we were scheduled to do utility billing and AR next, and then permits after that.
So it's in, the payments are in sync with your comfort level, and they're, they're performing according to this?
Yeah, we have at least a touch point meeting with them each week to, to see our progress, their progress, and go back and forth.
Hadn't, hadn't heard much, and I know it's internal, so I just thought I'd ask since I saw the one invoice. Just to confirm, and if anybody heard here, the Applebrook Golf event was $11,950. That is a fully reimbursable event from the fees collected by resident players.
Correct.
Yep, okay. The, uh, let's see, the invoice, budget, um, what the heck did I write down? I'm sorry, I can't read my own writing. I did see, this is a minor one, I did see one in here for Honeybrook Hardware. We got some propane, and I think some chains sharpening. Maybe they have a special operation out there, but don't we have a hardware store that's closer to our neck of the woods and our immediate economy than Honeybrook? Just, just a question.
Yeah, their rates are really, really good.
Ah, well, there, there you go.
And oftentimes, Mark does a little bit of bartering with them as well.
Yeah, okay, I just want, you know, I just wanna try and hit a couple of these. And one I want to ask about, about the last one, the ACH debit page.
Which batch is this, Mike?
This is, well, it's not a batch, it's a single sheet at the very end.
Okay.
ACH debit. We have, am I misreading, it says here, uh, there is a bank card monthly fee, credit card reimbursement of credit card fee, and reimbursement of credit card fee, there are two of them, one for $933.67 and one, not $933.66. That's, that's not an expense, or isn't an expense?
It's a reversal of a prior charge.
Okay, alright. And looking here, the bank fees I see for May, total up to about $900. Have we tried to leverage it all? I know the, some of these particular, you know, banking, electronic banking protections are, are a cost for service, but do we have any leverage to work with our banks to try and give us a reduced rate? I don't know whether you've looked into it or not, $900 for banking fees a month.
Our, our banking fees just for MNT really is more like 575.
Okay.
Most of this is the pomantus fees that we eat, and the, the credit card fees that we eat for, uh, that's utility billing online, we take the charges, and then we also do it for Parks and Rec.
Alright. I'm just trying to learn a couple of these things and then share them as, as we go, that's all I have.
So the banking fees, can you tell us how much the banking fees are, what's the percentage that we're eating?
Um, oh, so out of this bill right here, the total is actually $2,824.63. And really, our monthly banking fees are, at MNT, are about $575.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I wanted to be more clear. So the credit card convenience fee that we're, that the township is, is taking on, how much, what's the percentage that we're paying for the convenience of our residents who use that service?
Uh, between 3% and 5%.
Okay.
And it just depends on what the class is, or how much their bill is.
You know, it's interesting, as you mentioned that, 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 the, if you pay your bills online and you pay Aqua, Pico, as two examples, you will see, under the actual bill amount due for the month, a convenience charge. For the last number of years, they put it on there as a field, but there's no charge at this point in time, but there, it's a long-term prep that to say sooner or later, it's gonna come, and we're gonna have that additional dollar, $2, $3 every month.
Looking at other townships for sewer rate comparisons as well, it looks like most other townships have a, an explanation saying if you choose to pay by credit card, you will incur X percent.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. I'd like to know, when we're in the budget discussions, I'd like to know how much we've actually paid out for the convenience of our residents to do their banking, their, their bill paying by credit card. That's something I'd like to, I'd like to know how much we've spent this past year. And then, if, are you done, Mike, with your question?
Yes, thank you.
I just wanted to look at batch 2 of 6, page 6, Massic's cap, capital replacement for $55,153.
That's the tractor part of the boom mower, yep.
Oh, yeah. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that that was the boom mower. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could add to that, we do offer automatic electronic payment to our residents. If they provide us with avoided check, it's a service that we provide free to residents as an alternative.
Where their sewer and trash. That's good to know. So, so that's for sewer and trash?
Yeah.
And, do, I'm not gonna put you on the spot tonight, but I'd love to know the percentage of residents who use the credit card versus the automatic deposit.
So we currently have 500 residents on electronic debit with, providing me with a credit, with a check, avoided check. We pull their funds electronically on the 20th of the month that the bill is due. The residents who use Paymentis varies by month, obviously, they're more in the month that it's due.
Okay.
But I do have an analysis that I can provide to Dave on that.
That'd be great, another time.
So, Chris, Prince, I, I think if I'm, if I'm thinking my own situation with the trash refuse and recycling bill, I pay that online, are you, I use a, what, what do we call that, an electronic banking check? I don't, I don't save it, though. I, I put it in each time, but, but there's, I don't think there's a fee attached to that, right? There's no fee with?
When you do your payment online through Paymentis, the township absorbs the cost for that. It's either, it's either $2.25 per transaction, or 2.95%, depending on the type of payment that you're using.
Kind of what you were getting at, Michelle, then, about the cost, and, you know, it's a resident, I wouldn't mind paying that if, if it keeps the township in, in better stead, $2 versus changing the dynamics of the township revenue base.
Right.
Or provide me with avoided check, and nobody pays anything, the township or the resident.
Okay, alright, okay, good. Thanks, that's, that's, that's informative.
Any more questions for Dave from the board? Are there any questions regarding the bills in the room? Or in our Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question, those who wanna pay the bills? I?
I. Thank you, Dave. Thanks, Chris.
Uh, there is no old business, so we're gonna move on to new business. So the first order of business is consider preliminary approval of Malvern Institute land development application.
Derek? Thank you, madam. Sure, I will start it off, Madam Chair, thank you. So, as you can see in the packet, there's a lot of material here. I have enclosed in the beginning of that material just a document list, so everybody can stay straight during the, the discussion here. We have our attorney on the matter, Ms. Kristen Camp, and Nate Klein, our engineer, as well as the applicant's attorney and engineer as well. So, again, I have a lot of material here, there's plan sheets, we can, I can put up on the screen, share that, and we can allow Mr. Nagel or whoever to present, but I'm gonna hand it off to whoever wants to start and go from there.
Alright, please, come on up. And please, if you don't mind, for the record, your name and your company.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Brian Nagel. My company is Macleary Harvey LTD, and I'm the applicant's counsel. I've been here in the township many times on this subject, and we're at the point now where we've received a recommendation of, for, in favor of preliminary land development approval from the planning commission. That was a unanimous recommendation. We will have to come back for final plan approval. There's some agreements and other things that will have to get processed through with your solicitor, and a few conditions that have to be met. But with that, I think we're, we're ready for preliminary land development approval. I recognize that, that this full group hasn't seen this. Some of you maybe ever. So I'm gonna ask Rick Stratton from Chester Valley Engineers to come up and give you an overview of the plan, and where we are on some of the, the review comments and things that we've addressed, and then we'll go from there, if that's acceptable.
Alright, Brian, you don't, you don't intend to go systematically one, you know, if, if we looked at Pinone's review and you go through point by, we're not gonna go point by point, right?
We've already, we've already, we've already done that with your engineer, with the planning commission, that's, that's all been taken care of already, really.
I mean, I have some, as one supervisor, I have some specific questions, short of having to hear a whole presentation. I mean, you've made multiple presentations, and Pinone's report is very thorough. We have the planning commission's recommendation. There are a couple matters that the board has to consider tonight, in addition to considering preliminary that you're aware of, but I'm, I just, I, I'm not ready for a full-blown.
Well, I want them to present, I want them to present things as they wish to present them, because there are some residents here who have not been here since the beginning of the process. There are some supervisors who are not fully up to speed on it. So I think that the more information we have, the better off they.
Yeah, I think, I think Rick will give you a good overview, but it won't be too lengthy.
Perfect.
And I think he's gonna detail some of the fence heights and things that you need to know about, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Well, if you can please both of us, then you are really Solomon's cousin.
I've had it. Um, Kristin. Okay, I was gonna say, it's, it's hard for the Zoom people to hear you. So do you, can you please, would you be kind enough to please come up and restate that? Because I want the people on Zoom to hear, do we, can you, Kristin, can you just bring your stuff up and have a seat? Because you're here for us, please, thank you so much. Rick, you can get up again, it's okay.
Is there a pointer available?
I'll do my best to, to use the screen here as well.
I do have a laser pointer, but sometimes they don't.
Go ahead, give it a go.
Red ones often don't work.
Sometimes they do not show up on the monitor.
Blue, green, sometimes they work more.
Give it a shot, we'll see.
I can see that.
Nice.
Oh, yeah, wait, oh.
Not on the screen.
Not on the screen? Oh, bugger.
That's, that's just the LED technology.
Oh, the angle. Well, you know what, why don't you use it in case the people in the audience can see it?
Sure, sure. My name is Rick Stratton.
And Kristin is gonna restate her statement for us, please, for the record, thank you.
I was just responding to Mr. Lynch's comment that one of the planning commission's recommendation was that the applicant would have to comply with any outstanding comments in the Pinone review letter of May 25th, 2022. So that would have, those comments would have to be satisfactorily addressed before they would get final plan approval, or come back to you seeking final plan approval.
Thank you, Kristin. Okay, Rick, go ahead.
Thanks. Rick Stratton, Chester Valley Engineers, I'm the civil engineer for the project. The Malvern Institute is a treatment facility located at 940 West King Road in the township. Right on the border here of East Whiteland and also Willistown Township. The property is 9.6 acres with frontage on King Road. There's an access drive that comes in from King Road into the existing parking lot. The drive also continues on to a circle to, to pull up and drop off patients at the front door. The building is served by public and sewer and water. And this project really proposes a second-story addition to the facility. There's no increase in building footprint, they're building up. There's also a proposed smoking pavilion, an elevator shaft proposed for the maintenance, I'm sorry, not the maintenance barn, the, the two-story barn, which is a separate building on the property. And there's an addition of some parking spaces at the site, too, to meet the parking demands. And as Brian had mentioned, we've been here a number of times. And, and we're here tonight really asking for preliminary approval for the land development plan. We have received some letters from Pinone Associates and also the township fire marshal. And we've worked with township staff to develop some conditions of approval, and I'll go through those with you tonight as well. Just going back to the plan real quick, there are some proposed parking spaces, some proposed impervious cover, that's asphalt. There's also some proposed sidewalks, and there's also a, a smoking pavilion, sort of a, a building where patients can, can smoke outside. There will be some fence installed around the property. In the front of the property, there's going to be aluminum estate fencing, six feet high. And that's just on the front on King Road. So from corner to corner on King Road, that's where the aluminum estate fencing will be. It'll obviously be open at the driveway. Along the side of the property, on the west side of the property, there will be a PVC sound fence, natural color, texture, and that's also six feet high. That's going to go around the side of the property. It'll go around the back of the building. It's not against the property line, the, the fence, I'll just point to the screen here for those in the room. The fence continues on through here, to the back. And it ends right here, there's a flood plain, flood boundary right here, which we're not allowed to construct things in that boundaries. The fence does stop there. And the fence does pick up here again, goes around the back and up the east side of the property on the Willistown Township side. So that's the extent of the fencing. On the outside of the fencing, there's extensive landscaping to help buffer this facility from the residential neighbors that surround it. And so a combination of all those trees in full maturity and the sound fencing, we feel we've done our, our best to mitigate sound and noise and disruption to the neighborhood. There are some proposed parking spaces, as I'd mentioned, and for the proposed impervious cover that we're adding, we are proposing some stormwater management. There will be a infiltration basin constructed underneath the parking lot that will accept runoff from the new parking lot and some of the existing parking lot to help reduce stormwater flows that leave the site. The fire marshal review letter. The one, one thing I wanted to touch on there was the request that a fire, remote fire department connection be provided at a location that's acceptable to the fire marshal. Fire marshal also requested fire hydrant flow test nearby, and potentially another new hydrant. So we're looking into that, and we'll work with the fire marshal to address that comment. And I just wanted to touch on, I don't wanna go line by line through all the Pinone comments here, but I just wanted to touch on several that are pending or outstanding, and just let you know how we're going to address those. Unless there's questions about the overall site layout, as I've described so far.
Let's get to the Pinone, that's good.
Thank you for that correction. Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right, Kristin. The, the side fence, the sound fence is actually eight feet tall, thank you for that. The, the front estate fencing is only six. The, the sound fencing on the side and in the back is eight feet.
And Rick, the, the, the fence, the landscaping, the landscape, the green buffer, if you will, that is going to be on the residential side of the fence. That's not gonna be on the inside on the Malvern, that's on the, okay, so ultimately, that fence will be pretty well screened once the landscape starts to mature.
That's correct.
Just wanted to make sure I was on the right side of the fence, correct side.
I have a question regarding that. So are these plantings going to be in the flood plain?
No. The plantings. You could scroll, there's a landscaping sheet which shows the proposed plantings. So there are no proposed plantings within the flood plain. A majority of the trees are located in that southwestern corner of the site.
Okay.
There is a small, narrow row of shrubs and bushes on the Willistown side. There's also numerous trees, various trees in the front proposed, and then also some trees around the existing parking lot. As is the case with most land development, we, you know, we propose trees in, in and around parking lots to provide a little bit of shade here and there. So that's the landscaping.
Okay, and you said you're not gonna go through every single one of the Pinone recommendations?
Correct. And I'll, what I'll do is I'll call out the page number and the comment number. On page 2 is the first one I wanted to highlight, comment number 3. This comment really asks that we identify a security video camera location on the plan. We have not yet done that. We will, we will show that location and identify it on the final plans. This is the preliminary plan. So on the final plans, we'll have that video camera location identified. It'll be in the front, right, right near the front of the driveway here. I can tell you that much.
Is there, Rick, is there any value, or, or Brian, any value in that video camera location in having, for instance, our police department just commented, comment on it, or is that a matter you wanna just preserve for yourself, but as opposed to them saying, yeah, maybe it'd be better here from our experience, et cetera, et cetera. Any thought about that to involve our police on, on that? Brian?
Based on experience with this, I think the police department would want us to identify that location. We had an existing camera monitoring station in the building.
Yeah.
So they'll, they'll know where, best place to put it. And then actually, they'll be, after the preliminary, the company will come out and evaluate four mountains to give their opinion about a little sign.
I, I, I hate to, I hate to keep reminding people, but the back and forth between people without a mon, a microphone makes it so people on Zoom can't hear anything you're saying.
That was my fault, too.
So, so if you could please step up and explain that to us again, on the microphone, I'm sorry, I, I don't mean to keep being a pest, but
No problem, we're all.
Trying to keep, keep things on the up and up.
That's good, we're all trying to get used to that still a little bit. So the, the answer to Mr. Lynch's question is that the Malvern Institute will have its, its security camera company come out, identify the best, between preliminary land development approval and final land development approval, identify the best place to put that camera, relate it back to the camera monitoring station within the building where there, there are many other cameras that are, that are in the building as well as out of, outside of the building, that are monitored in there by the staff. And then, at that time, Malvern Institute will sign off on that and install the camera as part of the project.
I'd just like to make a comment that there are different kinds of cameras, and a single camera may not be adequate. We'll be considering a, a motion tonight to put cameras in our park. And there are specific cameras that are license plate reading cameras versus, you know, night vision cameras and face recognition cameras and this kind of thing. So if you would be open to the police suggesting the appropriate kind of camera or cameras and location, I think that'd be great.
We can certainly take a look at it.
Okay, and just a reminder to the Zoom room folks, we do see a hand up, and this is something where we're gonna have the presentation. And so we're gonna ask all questions in the room and in the Zoom room are hold, are held until the end of the presentation, and after the board has had their questions answered. So jot down your question, it's gonna be just a little bit.
Okay, thank you. The next comment I wanted to jump to is on page 4. The comment itself starts on page 3, but our latest comment sort of ends on page 4 at the top here, number 9. The very, the bold type at the bottom, at the bottom of that comment says, pending applicant indicates fencing details will be coordinated with Willistown Township, pending approval. So we've sent a, a sample of what the proposed fences on the Willistown property to Willistown, and they said that before the fences install, we have to get to Willistown, and they said that before the fences install, we have to get a fence permit. So we will do that before the fence is installed, we will submit a fence permit application to Willistown Township. We've already showed them the fence we want and they say it does meet the code. So we're comfortable with that. The next comment I wanted to touch on is number 11 on page four. Maintenance requirements. For the fencing, we will, we will add some notes to the plan, which describe how the fence will be maintained. These things are not something you can install and forget about for 20 years. We understand that. And it's in Malvern Institute's best interest to maintain them. So that's what those maintenance notes will, will do. The next one. I wanted to touch on was number 12 on, also on page four, that we'll provide fence details. There, there is a fence detail on the plan, but I think some additional information is needed to describe the fence and we'll add that to the plan. Including the fence manufacturer, what we typically do is put or equal on there as engineers and then when the fence is going to be purchased, the engineers will review and determine if they they're providing an equal fence to the specifications.
Rick, let me interrupt you for a minute. Comment five also deals with the fence, the eight foot high fence. And that is supposed to come before the board to, to review that for approval. Is it the intent of the applicant to come before the board with that on the night that they're going to be seeking final approval or will you present that to us at a, a meeting prior? So that we can have a chance to look at it if it.
The fence detail is on the plans now. I don't imagine that that fence detail for the estate fence will change.
Okay.
The fence detail is on sheets.
That's the eight foot high fence along the perimeter, correct?
No, the estate fence is the, the fence.
Oh, the estate fence is, is the one in, on the front, front it, right? But this one, let me see, the
I'm sorry.
Install, maintain.
The western and southern boundaries, except areas within the floodplain.
Got it. Okay. So this is the sound fence.
Not right. I thought it was different. Yeah.
What sheet is that?
That would be sheet 12A.
Okay. I'm trying to move these sheets, but it's
12A.
The top, yeah, the top left corner of 12A shows a eight inch solid PVC fence. There are notes here about soundproofing material will be added to the PVC fence. It must be installed per the manufacturer's instructions. And as engineers, we will review a cut sheet of that fence detail before it's installed. That is the fence detail that we're proposing now.
And Rick, there was a comment, it was actually listed under new comments, but I think interrelated about access gates installed along the south and west. Borders.
Which number are you on?
Well, this was under new comments, but it's, so I say it's interrelated. A new comment is on page 11.
Okay.
And it says here, let's see, access gates into the fence buffer area recommended along the south and west property lines area for maintenance. Yeah. Is that something that will be built into it? Is, or is that the consideration for maintenance? Because when I see access gates there and the size of the fence, I'm thinking, well, that's an opportunity for access, not just for maintenance, but others who may want to come and go. And then I guess, you know, poses a question to me that I posed to you, is there, are there going to be security cameras there to access the monitor if there's access gates there to, who comes and goes?
Those gates will be locked.
Okay.
But yes, we're providing an access.
Provide access gates, Rick.
So that maintenance on, on either side of the fence can be made without having to walk the entire perimeter to get to the other side.
Sure. Okay. And they'll be locked and when they're not in service. Okay. Nice. Thank, thank you for that information.
Okay, but I, I want to go right back to five. So the applicant shall install, maintain an eight foot high fence approved by the board of supervisors during the land development plan review. So we have not seen that yet.
It's on the plan tonight.
It's on the plan tonight, but you, so you expect us to approve that tonight then?
Yes, with preliminary approval.
Okay. Okay. And go ahead.
So on that point, what else is there? I know that you're near as close as or something more specific. I was just looking for the material to provide. This was in the material you sent, Rick, engineer on May 27.
Can you get your microphone question?
Is this something that is needed for the board to look at? Is, is this the same specification that's shown on the plan?
Yes, that, that is the same spec. That is a sample of a sound fence.
Is that the same one we had at the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, I can pull that up.
We'll pass it down, Mike. We'll pass it.
That's why I may jump back. So, you know.
Don't pass it to Mike. There you go. Okay. So that's the first I've seen that. Okay.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And they fill it with foam to add the additional sound attenuation.
That's correct.
No, it's a the landscaping will help over time. But it is, it, it does serve a purpose. So I, I get it. I get it.
Okay. Derek, can I? Yes, absolutely. No, I didn't pick a color, but.
I mean, Nate, do you have any other comment on the fence or is there anything that?
Come on up, come on up, Nate. Join the party. Name and company for the record, please.
Nate Klein with Panone Township Engineer. Yeah, I think at a preliminary level, we're in good shape with the fence. Really, all that needs to happen at this point is just clarification on the manufacturer that's going to be used and the color. Also, sometimes there's a texture option, but again, I think that can all be nailed down as we move towards final plan.
Okay. But again, because of the way the condition is worded in the zoning approval, it comes to you for approval. So if there's something specific that you don't like, and I know you're, it's not always easy on a plan sheet, a detail on a plan sheet to really see it. That's why I want them to say to you, this is what it is. Get your comments back.
Kristen, would that?
Tonight, I mean, it, I'm comfortable if it's a condition leading into final plan approval because it's such a detail. But if you're not comfortable, then you're the one that has to come with it.
Would that can, would that be, Kristen, a separate motion or contemporaneous with the?
I think it's contemporaneous with the total motion. Again, if, if you're comfortable with what's being presented, you can just include it as part of, assuming you're going to act to approve, it can be a condition of approval. If you're not comfortable with it, then it can be again deferred to final plan. But I think they need to understand what it is you don't like. And if you don't know what you don't like, because you haven't seen enough, that's fine, too. So there's a, there's a lot of flexibility because this is only preliminary plan approval.
Okay.
Well, I was going to say it's important that you know that Michelle likes pink.
I'm okay with what Kristen just said. I, I understand you're seeing it tonight and I, I'd like you to say, I mean, this is the fence. It's been this for a long time. So this is the fence. But if there's any final comments or things you want us to look at, we can do that before final approval. That would be fine.
All right.
And am I right, Rick, that the goal was that you're really not going to see the fence, that the neighbors hopefully will see the landscaping and not the fence?
That's correct.
I mean, obviously in time, it takes time for landscaping to mature and all that, but
Right.
understanding that people were upset by the, the appearance of it. So I think the other goal was to make sure that there's some significant buffering going on.
Okay. And then I'm going to state also that I know from our personal, my personal use from just personal experience, there's going to be mold all over that. So are you going to include mold mitigation as part of that maintenance process?
There's, yeah, maintenance will be scoured out on the plan.
Okay.
My, my recollection was that it's treated with mold resistant, retardant chemicals, but it will still. But yes, there's something in the, in the maintenance details will
I mean, I, I can't, I can't, I can't approve anything like that without knowing that it's going to be addressed maintenance wise. And what does the gate look like for that fencing?
I don't have a gate detail. It'll be a, a man gate wide enough for a person and, and maybe a small mower to, to get through.
But it'll, it'll be the same kind of panel, Rick?
Yes.
With just, it won't be a, a, you know, it won't be a broken, it won't be a, a different.
Correct. Correct. It'll look just like the rest of the fence. There may, the spacing of the columns may be a little different at the gate.
Sure, sure, sure.
But that's
But it's the same, it's the same look. It's not
There'll be a latch with a, with a lock on it. Yeah.
Okay.
Good question.
Alright, so that was number 12.
The next one I want to move on to was number 19. About the sound attenuation blankets for the generator. We did submit a generator blankets, cut sheet in the materials last month. And there's also a cut sheet for the proposed generator that was one of the attachments. Malvern understands, you know, allow generator, something that the neighbors don't want and they don't want it either. So they're going to do, do their best to get a generator that is quiet as possible and provide that sound mitigation detail.
That's a page six.
Do, do we have a picture of the?
So one of the attachments is the sample blankets.
Okay.
The other thing that's important for the board, this is Brian Nagel. The other thing that's important for the board to understand is that when this condition was written, Malvern had an existing old diesel generator that made some, was, was louder than kind of a modern generator. And that generator is broke, you know, that went out of service. Basically, it ran out its useful life. So Malvern's getting a new generator. So it'll be quieter to begin with. And then it'll, in addition to that, it'll also have the sound attenuation blankets.
Will it be located at the same place as the old generator? And can you point that out on the plan for me?
Yeah, that's, it's shown on the plan.
My eyes aren't that good.
I know this, it's, it's brutal, isn't it?
Yeah, it's close to the smoking pavilion.
Okay.
So it's, the smoking pavilion is going to be in front of the existing old farm structure. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And so the generator is adjacent to that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can you pull up the plan? Derek, and then you can point it out on the plan. Do you mind?
Yeah.
You got those young eyes.
You know what's planned set number one?
It's it will show up on four or five.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And if anybody wants a large size plan, I think that's always helpful. So let us know. We'll try to get you that.
I do have some.
Yeah, just hard. I find very hard to see even on the computer because you can't see it in, in perspective. So we can always forget you this.
Okay. So you said that there was a photograph of the sound attenuation blanket in the, I didn't receive that in my packet, did I? Did I skip over that one?
It was part of Rick's email to the township on May 27th. It had a bunch of different things. That was presented to the planning commission.
Well, that's, I was gonna say, we didn't, we, we didn't get the planning commission. It is part of this.
Planning commission have any comments on that? Have you, has anybody?
They did not.
They did not. Okay.
They didn't get into it.
Is that generator considered emergency backup generator? It's not running for any other purpose. So it would only be running for, for required maintenance and testing. And then on emergency situation.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, there, isn't there a daily turn on, turn off of it?
I don't know the specs of the generator, but every, every generator has its own recommended.
Most, most generators have a monthly, built in monthly test.
Yeah.
I, I know some that I know
A lot of them do.
Building I was in before, we, the, the generator would go on every day for about five minutes just to
Just to make sure it was ready. That's interesting.
I wasn't the worst thing in the world, but even though my office was right next to it.
All right, moving on.
Okay, the next comment I will move on to is comment number 24, which starts on page six, but then ends on page seven. And I think that there will be a draft document submitted or had been submitted to the township about the decision in order for the facility not to expand beds in the future.
Very important.
Do you want to speak on that, Brian?
There's, there's two documents that, that still need to be submitted to the solicitor for review. One is the notice to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on the limitation of 80 beds. That's in the one condition, be a very simple, straightforward notice to them and all submitted to Kristen for review as a condition of preliminary approval. And then the other document, there's a few others that have been submitted. The other one that has not yet been, that I have drafted, but I have to make a couple revisions to it is the declaration that gets recorded that restricts the Malvern Institute from further expansion for a period of 30 years. So those are the two, those will be two additional conditions of preliminary approval. They'll have to be signed off on by Kristen before final approval.
Okay, that, that was, that's the key because the, the board would not be in a position, Brian, to grant final approval until those documents are fully.
Absolutely, absolutely agree.
Yeah, those are, those are two key, key for the, the whole project. Thanks, Brian.
So those are, Brian just covered number 24 there.
Right.
On page, on page seven. My next comment I wanted to touch on is on page nine of the Panone Review Letter. Page nine, comment nine. This is asking for more details on the stormwater management design. About a week and a half ago, we did soils testing on the site to evaluate the soils and their ability to infiltrate stormwater. We did some tests. We got some encouraging rates. And I feel that the, the design we have shown now is a conservative one. And I believe it'll still, it, it's more than large enough based on the rates we saw last week. So that, that will address comments.
Brian, does that also anticipate the increase in previous surfacing with the new parking?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it does. We will also add some permanent inlet filters. The new catch basins that are going in the parking lot will have water quality filters permanent inside. And we will call those out on the plan where, which inlets will have those filters.
And how will they be maintained?
The maintenance requirements will be on there. I believe once, twice a year, I think they have to be cleaned out. I think in the spring and in the fall is recommended. Leaves and debris get in there and those will have to be pulled out, cleaned, emptied and, and inspected or after large rain events.
Okay.
That also goes hand in hand with comment number 19 on page 10 of the Panone Review Letter. O and M procedures, which will address the maintenance of inlet filters. Number 27 on page 10 is, we'll provide additional clarity regarding the fencing. So what the plan doesn't do yet is show you the limits of where the estate fencing ends and the sound fencing starts. We'll add a couple of callouts on the plan. So that's more clear on the final plan. But it's essentially at the property corners, the two front corners on King Road. That's where that will be. And then the new comments at the end of the letter here on page 11. So on comment number 31, unless otherwise permitted by the township for safety, security for all night operations, lighting shall be controlled by automatic switching. So on comment number 31, unless otherwise permitted by the township for safety, security, for all night operations, lighting shall be controlled by automatic switching devices. We'll, we'll revise the lighting detail to, to had that note, so that the lighting is controlled by automatic devices.
I'd like to ask a question regarding that.
Yes.
So when there's a power outage, sometimes those programs clear themselves. And so what I'd like to know is, how long will you have to then get them back onto the schedule?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
Let's have an answer for that. Okay, let's give an answer for that.
Okay.
Because I don't want it to go for three weeks, when the lights are on for three weeks.
Right. I've not run into that where it's been that long, but I understand your concern. I'll get you that detail on, on final plans.
Okay, thank you.
There was a recommendation for a, a different tree or a shrub species here. Where the reviewer didn't feel that it was deer resistant enough. We'll, we'll address that. That's a will comply. Also some clarity on a species. We use the same symbol P O for a, for a species, and we need to clarify that and fix that. That's just a typo. Number 34. They're recommending a substitute for the Douglas fir, which is susceptible to needle cast. We'll, we'll, that's a will comply. We'll, we'll address that. Comment number one for the conservancy board, the applicant shall provide additional landscaping in the parking lot islands on the east and west side of the parking lot. Additional landscaping is proposed throughout the, the existing and proposed parking lot. So, you know, we'll need to get some clarity from the conservation board exactly what they're looking for. I believe our plan complies with the landscape ordinance. And then we touched on number 36 about the access gates for the, the sound fence. Those will be identified and detailed on the final plans.
Okay, I have a question, Rick, and it is on page seven. Got two questions, number 26 and number 27. So let's hit 26 first. So is this going to be a scheduled update annually?
I actually was gonna ask the board what you wanted in terms of when, when do you want to start? And do you want to dictate when they come to you? I would think that you would want it to start after construction, after the development has been constructed and built. But maybe I'm wrong on that. Maybe you want it to start now. I mean, really, the condition relates to the development.
Right.
So to me, it doesn't really get triggered until the development is built. But it may, you know, that they probably need input as to when the board would like to see them come, so that we can make sure we get that on some sort of particular schedule.
Right.
And that your manager is aware of it, and there can be appropriate communication and reminders, so.
How long is this construction expected to take?
The site work could be about six months, is my guess. There's extensive landscaping there, and it'll have to be timed with the planting season.
Sure.
So that could extend, depending on if we hit that planning season.
So we can come up with a, a month that they need to report to us? So. If it's six months, six to eight months for the construction, then we have them come back, say, next May?
Madam Chairperson, can I make a suggestion? How about, how about a year from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy for the new space once it's completed?
I want it sooner than that.
Or some, some set time.
Yeah, I want it sooner than.
It's, it's.
Six months after this?
Yeah, I was thinking six months.
Yeah, I think that's perfectly reasonable.
That's fine.
Months after the use of occupancy has been issued. So whenever that use of, that you know is issued, then six months after that.
Then annually thereafter?
Annually thereafter.
Yeah, that's fine.
Kristen, does it make sense to say annually thereafter or at the request of the board?
No, annually. We need to have annually.
I'm just saying. If we want an update in six months, we can request one, not annually or at.
And, and or.
And or at the request of the board.
Minimum of annual. Because I don't want maintenance issues to go for a year.
Well, I was thinking, and at the request of the board, was for more frequent, not less frequent.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this, this doesn't prevent the board from asking for anything anytime. You know, my clients in regular contact with the township, with the residents, there's a protocol for residents in the, built into the conditions to contact Malvern Institute. Obviously, you already know they're free to contact the township, so we, I don't believe, my opinion would be, we can't change the, the conditions that were imposed by the zoning hearing board. That's a judicial proceeding, and those condition, conditions say what they say, and, and we can't change them. The Malvern Institute can't change them, and the township can't change them.
The board can ask for an additional, that's what, I think that's how I was reading Mr. Shuwi's comment, that or at the request of the board is more frequently, which as a motion for preliminary or final land improvement, I think they can ask. And I, I can't imagine the applicant would care.
Yeah, no, like I said, you could.
Under the township, if there's an issue, I think the only reason why the board would ask for more frequently is if there's an issue that their.
If the residents come to us and say there are these issues.
I think who's everybody to agree to, you know.
Okay. And number 27, so when the applicant becomes aware that a patient has left AWOL, it shall notify West, the West Town East Ocean Regional Police Department of the fact, provided the notification does not violate privacy laws. The intent is not to reveal the patient's identity or to require police to respond, but simply to advise the police that someone has left the facility. And so. I'd like a little bit more information about this, like a little bit more.
There, there's, there's a letter from me that's been issued already that outlines my client communicated with the police department about how they would like this to be done. And then I submitted a letter stating how it would be, would be done in accordance with the discussion that occurred between the police department and my client. So that, that's in the letter that I submitted, that's in the packet.
Oh, did I miss that then?
So the letter, it's.
It's very, it's very short and sweet. It's exactly what was the police department wanted. And then I put it, I put it in writing and submitted it to the township.
So Madam Chair, what, what we can do is, either in your capacity on the commission.
Right.
Or directly with the chief, ask for the chief to, you know, confirm that and educate us on what they expect to, to know and do. That protocol.
Yes.
In the conversation. It's not the discount, what Brian's saying, but just, we want to hear from the chief too.
I think, yeah, that's. I just, I must have skipped over that letter. There were so many papers. Oh, thank you. So request make notifications, that's right. I did read that. Or a little bit more clarification.
It complies with the condition. We, we can't, we can't tell the police what to do. They, they decide what to do. Once they're notified, that's up to the police department.
Why would you notify them unless it was a?
The problem, th- this condition came about because residents were saying that people leave there. They're, they're not there. You know, so they can voluntarily walk away and that happens. And so there was a concern that sometimes they walk into the neighborhood, sometimes they go to Malvern and rob a bank. Now, that's not fair for me to say, because that was one time incident, but, but I mean, the concern was really that they want to know when someone's leaving so that they can, the police can take appropriate measures, either to notify the neighbors, just so that we're, everyone's aware of the fact. But we ran into a little bit of issues of how, you can't reveal too much because there are privacy matters. So this, Mr. Nagel represented to me that he had spoken to the police department and the chief specifically about the way this was worded, and that she was satisfied.
Mr. Lumpkin, Mr. Lumpkin spoke to the police chief.
A question for all, all legal counsel. Do HIPAA restrictions, do they?
Yes.
Apply to police?
Oh, I don't know about police. They apply to my client in the, in this situation. And also, go ahead, Mr. Shuwi, sorry.
I was, I was trying, I was confused about the protection of the, I, I get you wouldn't tell the residents the name of the person who eloped, but. But the police can get personal information, I would assume.
Police can do it, police can do whatever. They, they have obviously law enforcement latitude. My client does not, so my client has to comply with the HIPAA laws. And, and also, just to be clear, this came up during the, all the proceedings. There's two situations where a patient leaves a facility voluntarily. One is the, would be the more common where they want to leave, they contact their family or whoever takes care of them. They get picked up and they, and they leave. This is the more rare circumstance where a person just leaves and walks off the facility. And that's when my client would follow this protocol.
So I would just say that if, if any of the board members wish a different procedure or are satisfied with the way this is written, to please provide comment on that. Okay.
I remember one of the issues was that when a patient elopes, their cell phones and methods of communication are locked and, and they elope without any of that. And one of the reasons they were knocking on neighbors' doors was to use their telephone to make a call to family member or friend. So I don't know if there's any policies or procedures you can, to do about that or change that in any way, but. That was one of the issues I recall.
I would think in some circumstances, you, I know somebody from the Malvern issue is not here other than their legal counsel, but there may be certain situations where a person leaves and the facility doesn't even know. Right? I mean, there, there's probably a million different scenarios of when somebody's leaving and who knows and who doesn't, whether they get the first item. So I think it's important that the police are notified as soon as possible, so they can be on the lookout. They can potentially, you know, patrol the surrounding areas. If they get a call from the neighbor, then they say, oh, that makes sense, go to the neighborhood immediately and try to deal with the situation.
Well, the other issue was the response time of the police, and, and, you know, we, we look at that regularly as far as average response time. And, you know, frankly, I was surprised at some of the information we're getting from residents compared to the normal response time of our police patrol and the township. So that's something that we would pay attention to, and we have the ability through our police commissioner to heighten the police's awareness of incidents that if we call that a hotspot, that, you know, we want to make sure that it's patrolled closer to there more frequently or whatever, so we can, we can address some of that.
I have a question regarding the, the number of windows that are located that would be overlooking residents' backyards.
So full architectural plans have not been developed. However, there are some schematic and some renderings. There's floor plans here as part of your packet.
Right.
And then as.
And I can't tell how many windows there are.
Yeah, I don't, I can't tell you the number of windows, but there will be windows on the backside of the building. But those new windows are for office space.
Right.
For staff.
Okay.
Not bedrooms.
Okay, that's great. But there will be clients up in those rooms as well, perhaps being counseled. So with staff, sure. Staff have to leave the room occasionally. I would like to see some kind of frosted glass, if possible. Neighbors have complained. Pardon me. That there are sometimes clients that will call to their children. So, I'm sorry, just took over my throat. So my concern is, I don't want anybody to be able to look down into their resident, into the residents' backyards or windows.
We discussed this with the planning commission. They did not recommend that. My client was opposed to frosting the, the brand new windows they're putting in. The patients can't call to any residents from the inside of the building. And there's no ordinance requirement or other condition that requires us to do it, so we would be opposed to any such.
Simply request, it's impossible that the client would consider that. And I, I think that that needs to, I think that needs to be addressed. That's something that, you know, we, we will talk about that later, so.
Okay, just, just, my position i- is that that would not be a legal or enforceable condition.
You know, and that, Michelle, and that, that's one thing that, once we start to undertake a, an annual review or what have you, and we get resident comments that an issue like that could come up. And if necessary, we might even be addressed under our nuisance ordinance, if there was something that, so it's, it's the kind of thing that maybe we wait and see how it goes, see how it performs, and whether it becomes an issue or not, it may not become an issue. At all.
We would, we would certainly be willing to, to talk about that issue during that process. That would be fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. Can I ask a question about the, the windows? You can open the windows, can't you? If you don't know. I mean, it seems to me like not being able to open the windows, maybe if the concern is calling from the windows, frosting doesn't do anything if you can open.
No.
If it's not, you don't want them to see what's going on in these rooms, then frosting covers that, I suppose. But I don't know how close, can you give any sense of how close the windows would be, or the back of the building where the windows would be to the nearest residents?
The second story addition.
Sixty or seventy feet.
Is about 100 feet from the property line and from resident, from the homes, probably another 100 feet. I don't know the exact position of every single home back there.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, well.
Okay, um, do, do you have any other questions, Cody?
Yeah, I have a quick question, might be for Brian or Kristen here. So what is the current, I may have missed it, what is the current protocol for if a patient leaves? Do, are, are, as we go notified, what's the current?
I'm not familiar. I don't believe they are.
Okay.
No, no, prior to, prior to this list of conditions, typically, unless there was some kind of an accident, active incident, the police were not notified if someone just left.
It's an extra safeguard then.
So that was added in as part of this process.
Thanks.
Mike or David, do you have anything else? Okay, so we're going to open this up to then, Brian, are, are you, are you and Rick both done?
We are, thank you.
Okay, so don't, and don't go too far, because you'll have questions potentially to answer. But the residents are going to now have their opportunity to ask questions regarding, we're going to do the, the present, the people who are present first, then we'll go to Zoom. Are there any questions? Please come up, you all know, state your name and address for the record for us, please. I apologize for my tickle, sorry.
The gum, the gum?
Okay.
Terry Relic, 12 Tremont Drive. I have a question. On the sound wall, we were, we, they, they brought a sample at the second planning commission meeting, where it said what color it was going to be. And I believe they said it was going to be gray in color, and it was going to be the shiny. But according to the transcripts from the zoning hearing board, what the, what they testified to using was a color called teak. It's medium brown color with some green included. It also has a physical texture that mimics wood. So, because there was a lot of discussion about the fence.
Can you tell us when that was, Terry?
It was on Wednesday, April 25th, 2018. It was in front of the zoning hearing board. So. I believe that had they said, yeah, we're going to use the shiny, cheap one, then the zoning hearing board would have written in, you know, that it's going to have to be the upgraded, nicer wood textured one. Because that's what they testified to using.
The condition is that the board has to approve it. So whatever they testified to doesn't necessarily matter in terms of the way the condition was written, zoning hearing board approval. It is now your decision in approving the specifications and the details for the fence. And that's why I thought it was important for them to call that out. So whatever they said at that, it wasn't specifically imposed, as the condition says, you shall install a teak fence with not shiny or shiny. It's supposed to be presented to the board for them to approve.
But this is what they said that we're going to use.
Yeah, and I appreciate Terry bringing this up, because that now is a pointed discussion for this evening, whether we act upon that or, or separate that from any other action we may consider tonight.
And just defer, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it would.
We'll have the applicant comment on it as well, Terry, so we'll see if we get through it tonight, maybe we won't.
Okay, because the other one, we don't want the sound wall, but if we have to have a sound wall.
What was represented then?
Now, my other.
Now, my other question is, on, on the, on the proposed plan, there, are they remodeling, are they remodeling the barn with this? Because it's not, it's not on here. It's not listed on here because.
It's not a part of the land development. That's an interior just building permit.
Okay, so it's not.
So whatever they're doing inside the barn isn't, or Rick, tell me if I'm wrong, other than the elevator shaft is just a building permit process. They did submit building or floor plans for proposed barn renovations, but that's just a building permit.
Okay, so, so, but a building permit, like, can they put a porch on it?
No, no, these are interior renovations.
Windows in it, I think, Terry, is that right?
Yeah, so we just, again, they showed us a picture with the front is, but they didn't show us a picture with the back was.
As far as the floor.
Yeah, the floor, we, yes, but we don't know. Yeah, we just, yeah, we don't know what the.
You could look at the building permit, right? When that's submitted, that's that's public information.
We don't, we don't have a copy of, I know a color signs they're going to use. I know how far they're going to plant the trees. I know nothing about, you know, what's being built, zero.
Okay.
And I also have a question on the, on this, on the, on the, on this rendering.
Floor plan.
Floor plan, thank you. There's building into the main building where on the drawing where it has them, you know, this blacked out. This is new, what they're showing. Everything on the main building is not what they showed during the zoning hearing board. So what is the, what is the square footage of the second floor?
Good question. That's a fair question.
Because they were, that we were told that the second story addition square footage was going to be five thousand nine hundred and ninety square feet plus two hundred and seventy one for a, just a connection from the first to the second floor. So all this, all this right here is new to us. That's not on this. So is that, are they getting more space or they?
Okay.
I mean, they should be held to what the zoning hearing board.
Okay, so let's, do you have any other questions, Terry?
Um, let's see, sorry.
That's all right.
Maybe help us get the answer before we forget.
Well, there's three, there are three that they can comment on now. They can comment on the fence. They can comment on the, what was the second one? The barn, the barn.
What's, what's, yeah, what's the back of the barn?
And then comment on this third one about the representation.
Okay, so, so let's let them, let's let them comment on that. And then you can come back if you have more.
I do, I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Terry, I have a quick question for you. Why don't you want sound wall fences?
Because it's a turnpike. Do you see what it says? It says on the picture, it says turnpike. It says all sound wall, it's a sound wall.
Do you have a suggestion of another fence?
I don't, I mean, you know, but when they say they're going to plant trees, that the, they sit up at a much higher elevation. So that, so the fence is going to be at their highest elevation. So it's about a ten foot drop to the neighbors. So those plantings are going to be on a, on a hill. So there's no way that the plants are going to cover this. So, you know, it's going to be like a castle up on a hill with a moat around it. I mean, with a, you know, a wall around it. So that's what we're going to see.
So, so would you prefer something more natural then?
I would, we would, if it's going to be a sound wall, if it's going to be a turnpike sound wall, I would, we would like it to be the wood finish. I mean, this is a very, this is a lot nicer if we got to look at a turnpike wall. Because it's sitting up high, it's not flat. So if you put trees in front of it, you know, it's, it's at an angle and it's on a hill. So I I'm just not sure how you're gonna.
So the landscaping certainly over time will mature to a degree. It's going to take a while, Terry.
Right, ten years.
Yeah, probably for some, no doubt. Well, let's, let's have the applicant comment on those three items, see what, see what we can learn together on it.
Okay, and then I, my other, yeah, so that's, and also too, with the runoff, if if you're going to fix the runoff, that's great. If you're not going to fix the runoff, those trees are just going to fall over. Because everything the neighbors plant fall over because there's so much storm runoff from the nineteen eighty two edition. Our yard just flooded. And then they mentioned windows only in the, the faculty. So there's no windows in the patient bedrooms? Oh, you didn't say that, you said there's only windows in.
Yeah, come on, I was going to say.
Oh, no, the, the, remember, our, our yard, our neighborhood surrounds that. So though if there's windows in the back, which is what you're showing, patient rooms in the back, there's houses here. What are these little blue things? Patient rooms?
And why don't you come on up, Rick?
Clinical therapy space.
Blue is patient rooms. And they're also, they're also, I assume detox bedrooms? Because you're moving detox patients up top?
So they need to come up and use the microphone to answer any of the questions. So it's just so you know.
Yeah, okay.
I want the Zoom people to be able to hear it too, because I know there are a number of residents on Zoom. So if somebody can come up and answer some of those questions.
So the, the, the floor plan that's, that's in the packet was an exhibit to the zoning hearing proceeding. So that hasn't changed, that's the same. What I think what you were comparing was the land of a, a, a a copy of the footprint from the land development plan versus what's in here as an architectural second floor addition floor area. And that, that's, that's an exhibit from the zoning hearing, so that's part of the record.
Brian, are you adding any additional land area or building area to the first floor? I think is what she's pointing out, she thinks that you are, are you? Are you, are you adding floor area to the first floor? Of the main building is my question.
No, it's a second, this is a second story addition.
I thought that was what you were concerned about.
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it's on the plans and they're part of the record.
It's not on the plans, because I asked Mr. Klein, but the number is it's not on the plan. Just answer one question. Terry, are you concerned that they're adding floor area to the first floor? Okay, but I thought you were pointing out in a plan saying you're, you're pointing to this. And you circled something, you said this isn't on the land development plan. Well, this has, okay, so the, all right.
Yeah, so.
Well, so we need to make sure, and one of my questions to Nate was, I don't see anywhere on the plan, although my eyes are going, and I didn't see anywhere that had a square footage. So we need to make sure that the plans, the land development plans identify the maximum square footage that's being, or the square footage is being proposed to make sure that it meets with the zoning approval. Okay. Do you know, Rick, what the square footage is?
I don't, we'll have to work with the architect to nail down that number and then put it on the plan.
Okay, you're limited in what you can do based on the zoning decision. I'm trying to find that.
With respect to the barn, the plan is for the, the main building and the barn renovation. There's conditions about both of them, but the barn renovation is an interior renovation only. We'll, we'll double check on window issues with respect to the barn as part of that.
Okay.
With respect to the fence, that kind of changed as the zoning hearing proceeded in response to comments from the neighbors. So what, what Ms. Relic was talking about, there were discussions about the details of the fence. The neighbors did say they didn't want a turnpike wall. And our consultants looked at that and came back with, you know, fence, sound attenuating fence models in accordance with what the sound expert who testified for Malvern Institute testified to that was a residential grade eight foot high sound fence, not a turnpike wall. So that's what was spec. We can drop the material off for the supervisors to look at. And as part of final land development approval, you can sign off, sign off on that. I don't know that my, you know, what's available is, is limited and it's, and it changes over time. That was three years ago. So if, if you want us to try to, you know, they, they have those solid core PVC fences that are used in residential applications. They also have hollow PVC fences that are used in represent residential applications. We're willing to look at it in any of those and we would be fine with doing that instead of something more significant is what you've seen here, the samples that we've had, what Mr. Shuey was mentioning about. And and also you, Madam Chairperson, the, the, the core in the fence, you don't necessarily have to have that. The, the fence is located on a higher elevation in accordance with the recommendation of the sound expert to maximize the sound attenuation, because if you drop it down, there's an existing fence in that location already. It's, I think, a six foot solid wood stockade fence. This, this could simply be just an eight foot residential PVC fence. It wouldn't have a foam core, but it would still have, it would still cause the sound to bounce back toward King Road and, and serve part of the purpose of why it's on the plan. So we're happy to look into that if that's what the board would prefer.
I think the residents don't like the way it looks, and I think they're looking for something more natural. So we'll have to hear from more of them to find out if that's what they're looking for. As far as the water mitigation, the runoff condition.
Yeah, there's, there my understanding is that there was never any stormwater management because you didn't do stormwater management really when, when that was done way back when. But this, this now will have stormwater management for the first time. So, you know, we would expect to see some improvement there. There was also an issue with the resident who I believe is here this evening. And our civil engineer, in response to her comments, went out and specifically looked at that area and has made some recommendations and coordinated with the township civil engineer to address at that location.
Perfect.
Even though there's no requirement that that be done. We voluntarily went back and and took the steps to do that.
Great.
To do as best we can in that location.
That's nice, okay. Did he hit all the issues, Terry, that you had?
Barn.
The barn.
Yeah, I just wondered why the barn on the plan didn't show, it just showed existing, so that was.
Yeah, it is existing, it's just an interior fit out of the barn. The only thing I'm not sure, Ms. Relic, that I have to go back and check, because it's been a little while, is whether or not there would be window openings there that aren't there today.
I think, I think there are and and but they may be required by code anyway to have access.
Right.
But they're not near the, that's on the Willistown side.
So, so, so please hold your comments until you come up. All right, I think then.
And I can just comment that the decision indicated that they're, they're only permitted a thirty four point zero four percent expansion. Whatever that square footage is, it's referenced as exhibit A seven in the, in the zoning hearing board, which I.
Thirty four.
Thirty four point zero four percent.
Where?
That the second floor, no, no, I'm sorry, the second floor, she was asking about the size of the second floor. But I do think that needs to be pointed out on the plan. And that Nate would have to confirm that that meets that as part of. Yeah, and they're bound by that. They're bound by that.
What they were going to use, so I just want to make sure that's it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. The, so will we ever see the floor plan of the, of what they're going to build on the second story as residents?
That's what this is. That's what, that's what they've submitted. And that's supposed to be clinical rooms.
So we'll never see, because, because only because there, it looks like they're putting detox beds upstairs, but there's no nursing station.
That's not, I mean, that's a building permit issue, that's not something that was.
Yeah, I mean, you're not going to see renderings of any kind in this land development.
Okay, I just want to make sure they stick to, I don't care what they put in there as far as, as long as it doesn't affect us. I just want to make sure that they're, you know, not getting, you know, that we're not going to be, if, I don't want to see like a big porch or big sliding glass windows on the barn and, you know, because if there's movie night, yeah, the neighbors are right there, so.
I mean, when they get into the barn and and the UCC level code inspection process, they're going to have to adhere to the Uniform Construction Code of Pennsylvania.
Right.
So they're not going to be, be able to do anything outside of that code.
Okay, because that's what we're concerned, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Are there any other residents that would like to come up? Please come up and state your name and address, please. And then I'll open it up to Zoom in a few moments.
Hi, is this on, sorry.
Yeah.
Amanda Greenberg, ten Brookmont Drive.
Speak into the mic for us, thanks, just bring it to you.
Amanda Greenberg, ten Brookmont Drive. I'm the property at the southwest corner of the Malvern Institute. I'm so I apologize if any of this is repetition for you guys. We just bought the property in February, so this is still relatively new to us. We've got amazing neighbors who have given us a lot of documentation to go over, so we've been trying to play catch up as much as possible. A few questions, so if anybody wants to write things down, that would be good. Back to the windows issue. I live right behind the property southwest corner and I've got small children. I'm one of the properties that mentioned that they call out to children by name with very lewd and incredibly inappropriate comments. My, I've got two six year olds and a three year old who should never hear that kind of language coming from anyone, let alone a stranger looking at them from while they play in the backyard. So with the windows, we know that they're not going to open, we're not worried about them calling out from inside the building. It's that they can look down into our yard and watch our children play, knowing that we don't know the criminal history of these people, which we're not entitled to, I understand that completely. But as the mother of small children, it is a very big concern that they will be able to now have an eagle eye view into my backyard, watching my children play. And then while they're outside, make more comments and know exactly the ages of my, you know, based on seeing them, the ages of my children, the genders of my children and targeting them, especially because they do walk off the property without notifying anybody. And it does happen where the Malvern Institute isn't aware of it for a period of time. Are we going to wait for someone to then make it into my yard or a neighbor's yard and assault a child and then address some of these issues? Or can we kind of try to subdue that ahead of time by mandating that they do the frosted glass windows? So they're not watching neighbors and their children? You know, I mean, that's, that's just a huge safety problem. Because again, we're not entitled to knowing who's in there. But as residents and especially as parents, it's our job to protect our children. And I feel that asking for simply frosted glass windows is minimal as far as protecting children and making the parents feel a little bit safer about what could potentially be happening. And when it comes to that, it was actually in the planning commission, they said it's actually for you guys to decide. They didn't say that they're not going to recommend it. They said, when I asked this question at the planning commission, they said it's not for them to decide. They said you have to take that question to the board of supervisors because it's up to you guys to decide.
It's not in the recommendation, though, is what the point was. They did not impose it as part of their motion of recommendation.
Because they said they couldn't.
No, well, they didn't believe, it was legally.
Right, legally, it's not their place to make that.
Legally, they don't think it's legally enforceable.
And so.
And therefore, they did not include it in their motion to recommend approval to you.
But they said that you guys could.
Well, whether or not they choose to do it and whether it's legally enforceable are two different issues.
Okay.
Okay, and then on the wall, I know you said that there's going to be access gates. And I heard a really good question, I believe, Mr. Lynch, you asked if there's going to be cameras at those locations where the gates are. Do you know if there's going to be cameras at those? Oh, sorry. Perfect, got it. And then also, what's going to be done about the gap? I know you guys can't fence the entirety of it. So are there going to be cameras installed where that gap is? Because we have had some drug dealing problems going through that gap. The police so far have been pretty good about responding to that kind of stuff. But seeing as that gap is not going to be filled, I believe it's a safety issue that there should at least be cameras posted where that gap in the fencing is. So that when that activity happens, because it does fairly regularly, that we can at least identify the person that's.
This gap is due to the location of the creek is located.
Right, because I believe it's because it's protected. Right, because I believe it's because it's protected area, so there can't be any fencing, which.
Correct.
You know, we understand that, but should there, can we have some sort of safety mechanism in place, whether it's cameras or something? So that if and when there is that kind of stuff going on, it can be resolved. As far as the storm water water management, I know there was no stormwater management requirements back when the addition in nineteen eighty two was done. Unfortunately, based on the location of our yard, we end up with a swamp every time that there's any sort of rain, whether it's light rain, heavy rain, extended rain, any of it. I believe, Mr. Davis, I think I sent you pictures of, you can actually see the PVC pipes coming from their building direct, two of them, coming directly down the hill pointing into my yard. So there's literally stormwater being directed into my yard. I know with the planning commission, I sent pictures and videos, but I also have pictures and videos here. If you want to pass them around, you can see the accumulation of water that happens in our yards due to the lack of current stormwater management system. And I know the planning commission didn't formally recommend it, that they rectify the current stormwater problems. But they said that it would be, it would behoove them to do so. It was not a formal recommendation. If you're interested, I can show you the pictures of all the flooding that happens in our yards every time.
Go ahead and pass them down for us to look at. Thanks. As far as the stormwater mitigation, they they did send an engineer out to look at the situation, though, correct?
I don't know.
Okay.
I have no idea. And if there was, I don't know what the results of that were.
That's fair.
Or.
Okay.
What's going to be done going forward?
Any other questions?
Yes, the lights, someone brought up the lights that go into the neighbors. Again, it's a rather steep hill, so the new fencing is only going to go up so high on the building, just because it is going to sit lower than the actual building itself. So the while the fence is eight feet high, it might only cover five feet of actual building. And as it sits now, there's a wooden fence, yes, in the back against my property. But it doesn't even come close to covering any of the current first floor that's there. So the lights that are left on all night long shine right into my yard. And it's all night, every single day. So not sure.
Interior lights or exterior lights?
Both. Sometimes the exterior lights are left on. That's not a regular thing, but there's every night, the interior lights are on twenty four hours a day. And we can see all the activity that's going on inside from our sitting on our back patio. I mean, it's close enough that we can see detailed human people walking back and forth, and we can hear them and things like that. So if there's going to be some sort of timer shut offs or something, since those are offices, they're saying it's not patient rooms that are going to be on that southwest corner. There should be no reason for any of those lights to be left on after business hours, if I'm assuming correctly. So if if there's like a possibility to do sometime, sorry, some sort of timer. Because, I mean, look, I know I go to work every day and I forget to turn the lights off all the time. So I know there's going to be times when, you know, the therapist or whoever's working in those offices might forget. So if it could be like an automatic turn off on non-resident room lights, yeah, that would be helpful. And the last thing I wanted to address was the police response. Because we do know that there have been instances, one was brought up earlier where someone did go and rob a bank. The other is just a few months ago in November, a resident left and hijacked a school bus. Super fun, super not safe. Don't know why nobody knows about it. And being that my house is on the corner where the bus stop is, that's alarming. So there's got to be some sort of a system where police are notified immediately when someone walks off, not just when someone happens to notice it. Because who knows how long that could be? And then, again, we don't know the criminal history of the people that are there, and we're not entitled to that. But knowing that they're going to be eagle eye view peering into my yard, seeing young children of both genders playing in my yard. That could be, you know, someone with an altered state of mind, an open invitation, and nobody will know about it until after something happens. Do we want to wait until after something horrible happens to one of our kids for something to be done? There needs to be some sort of system where the police are notified right away, and if it is someone with, who's either a sex offender or a child predator or something, you don't necessarily have to tell us as neighbors. But the police need to be out there immediately to either escort them to their train station, if that's where they want to go, or to help them make a phone call to have someone come pick them up. But they cannot just be able to just roam our neighborhood, knowing that they're small children, especially now that they're just going to be looking at them. So those are my points.
Can you clarify, you want them to notify the police when they themselves don't know that someone left?
That's a problem if they don't know that someone left. Like, how do you not know?
I just want to make sure I understood.
There should be enough staff so that they that people are accounted for.
Okay, do you have any other questions?
Because if you've got people with certain kinds of criminal history, they should be.
But you keep, and I'm just going to say this because they're not criminals. They're there for treatment.
Right, but some of them.
But I just want that record to be clear. It's not fair to keep calling them criminals.
I'm just saying, they may or may not have criminal histories.
They may or may not, you're right, but please don't keep calling them criminals. It's not fair to them.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to refer to it that way, because I'm the child of an addict. I don't want someone to just assume that my mother was a criminal all the time, but unfortunately, there's a lot of times statistically criminal histories that go along with it, and it's just part of the disease, unfortunately, you know. And and again, through HIPAA laws, we're not entitled to that information. So as parents, as neighbors, as residents, we have to be on high alert and assume the worst, because we don't want to wait for something horrible to happen to one of our children before going on high alert. It's better to be proactive and more alert and more concerned than the other way around.
Okay, thank you. And Brian will answer some of those questions. And to be clear, you're right, Kristin, we can't assume that these people are criminals. Honestly, we have criminals living in our township, I'm sure. And we don't know it. So there we go, or former criminals.
Yeah, just and just to be clear.
Not our right to know.
It's it's a drug and alcohol treatment facility, not criminals or sexual predators or child predators or anything like that.
Right.
So that they could be, they could be at Malvern Institute, they could be in your neighborhood. It but, you know, we, what we know is that our patients are there for for treatment for for addiction issues. And and I also don't think it's fair to say that they're they're there peering out the window at your children. I'm not going to dispute that there's incidents that 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 could happen or that have happened, but I don't think that's the general rule of the patients. The patients there are bona fide there, trying to address their addiction issues. And unfortunately, those patients are getting younger and younger with each passing year. With respect to your question about cameras at the gates, those are the, those I think we're referring to, if I'm not mistaken, are the access gates for maintenance for the new eight foot high fence. And there won't be cameras there, they'll be locked, and they'll be open only when they're accessed by the by the landscaping crew primarily, which is, you know, early in the day.
So if somebody were to leave, they would not be able to get through that fence because they would be locked. They would not have the ability to open that. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Will they have the ability to go through the creek?
I'm sorry?
Will they have the ability to walk through the creek?
Is that the gap that we were talking about? I I suppose theoretically you could, it wouldn't be easy, but theoretically you could do that. There's nothing we can do about it. There are, I believe, three cameras on the back of the building that are already there. And of course, we're required to install additional camera at the front gate as part of the zoning conditions. With respect to the stormwater, I'm going to let Mr. Stratton address that. With respect to the lighting for land development and plan, there's nothing we can do about existing lighting, but the land development plan does address the addition, the the site improvements, and that does show zero foot candles at that property line down along that boundary to the, I guess that's to the, to the south. So that's a zero foot candle with respect to this application.
Brian, and this would be something that you would have to voluntarily agree to, but could you ask your client to consider using motion detectors in some of the rooms, maybe that are closest to the residence?
As they're making improvements on the first floor?
In in the new areas, I I would think that would be a possibility for the for the second story addition. I I think nowadays that gets specked on new architectural plans anyway, but we can double check that.
But even as they're making, even as they are making improvements to the first floor, because they're going to be putting in a permit for that as well, maybe they would consider using those same motion detector type of in switches in those rooms as well as they're making improvements.
In in an area that's being renovated, maybe, although I don't think the the first floor after you install the fence and the landscaping, I don't think they'll they'll be able to see that anyway. And then with respect to the AWOL question, there was testimony during the proceedings before the zoning hearing board about the frequency of the head counts that occur, but they're on a regular basis. So it would be that period of time, and I can't remember, it was something like an hour, half hour, something like that. And that that is when they would, obviously, for the first time for sure, discover that someone's missing. Whether or not they discover before that or they know someone's leaving that, but that that's where that stands.
And Brian, is that something that's mandated by the rules that govern those facilities?
I don't believe it is. I think it's just their their operating protocol. And then I'll just have Rick address, because I know he went out to the site and he spoke with the township engineer about voluntarily trying to address the storm dreams that you were talking about.
Yeah, so about a week and a half ago, when we did soils testing on the site, I did walk around behind the building at the back corner next to Mrs. Greenberg's house, and there are two pipes coming off that existing roof back there which are pointed towards the back of her property. And so stormwater comes off the roof out of those pipes and down a four to one slope roughly towards her backyard. What I think we can do there is take those pipes, install a small stone infiltration bed at the back corner of the of the of the house or of the the building. And and send that stormwater to infiltrate into the ground so that in those quick flash storms, that runoff coming from the roof will now be infiltrated into the ground. There may be some runoff from the land itself, which still gets to Ms. Greenberg's property, but the roof runoff will now be sent underground, and we'll use a simplified approach, which is a pretty common way for homeowners to manage stormwater for small projects like a patio. The stormwater proposed in the parking lot is not a simplified approach. That's a detailed design. But this back area of existing roof, we can, we can handle with a simplified approach, and we'll do an infiltration bed back.
So this dialogue was between Nate and Rick.
Great.
And suggested change to condition three, the second sentence of suggested condition three is what I just passed out.
Great.
It was it was refined a little bit, and I asked Nate if he was comfortable with this revision, and he is.
I think that addressed most of the issues, just not the window issue. And I don't think you can address that window issue.
Yeah, I don't have much to add about the windows. It's an architectural detail.
That's something that we're going to find out at a later time. Okay. All right, come on up then, if you have any other questions, if there's anybody else who hasn't come up, come on up. That's going to have to be on us. We'll talk, we'll talk more about that.
Good evening, Nicola Launcher, leaving nine fifty seven West King Road, crossing the street from Woods.
Thank you for coming. Can you spell your last name for us, please?
L N C H A R. Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm really concerned about all this stuff with Amanda talking, and I think mostly of this stuff have to be cleaned before we can either go farther. Whatever we call them, patients or whatever, I live twenty years almost crossing the street, right? I know institutes have transportation, they have van. You know how many times people come to me, ask me to drop them to train station? How much traffic I see inside in these woods, but they are not clean. We don't even know what's happening inside. This is like hell. If anybody want, I would, I would walk you through these woods. We need to have boots and see it, but what you're going to see there, what you're going to find it. And my, I have grandkids. I don't want them either to go in other side of the building. So before we start discussing anything, we have to worry about safety and security, about neighborhood and patients wherever they are. There can be nicest people on the globe, but we don't want them to walk in a train station. We don't want now their bus station is moved a little bit farther. They have to go there and wait for bus, but they don't wait for bus. They come and say. I can tell you, I was safety and security inspector for federal government property. I work as inspector for Malvern Federal Saving, and I work as inspector for insurance companies. Now I'm just doing very little because I'm retired. I'm working as a locksmith and I'm enjoying. But this is something what must be very clearly understand before we can go any farther with this. So. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand the gentleman's concern. This was discussed ad nauseam during the zoning hearing. It was the subject of the zoning case that was presented, that went to court, that went on appeal, that was sent back to the zoning hearing and ultimately decided. And those very issues that this gentleman is referencing are what resulted in the twenty eight conditions that were imposed as part of the zoning approval prior to getting this land development approval. Those issues are not germane to this land development application. They've already been addressed. They're contained within the twenty eight conditions. Now we're at the part of the the phase of this project where we're just talking about engineering issues, and I know we're getting into some other issues that frankly, I'm not objecting to, we really shouldn't be, but we're trying to be reasonable as we get through this this part of the process. But we've already been down that path and discussed all those issues at length, and we ended up with the twenty eight conditions that address those issues.
Right, okay, thank you. Are there any other residents in the room? And Zoom people, if you can go ahead and get your questions ready, I know that there was at least one a little while ago, so we're just about ready to to go over to Zoom here.
My name's Paige Fenimore. I live at three Tremont Drive. And just bouncing off of what that gentleman just said, I just, in in two thousand eighteen, Mr. I think it was, believe it was Mr. Lumpkin said that there is currently nobody monitoring the cameras that exist now. And one of the conditions is that they will have to be monitored continuously when they, when this happens. Who is going to enforce that?
The zoning officer. It's a zoning decision. It's a condition of zoning approval of the zoning officer.
And how do we know that it's being done?
You have to trust that we are hiring the correct people to go out and enforce these things. We'll have to have, we'll have to have some parameters that are determined how we're going to have that person inspect.
Okay. Also, I.
Is that fair to say?
I believe you said that you have given Willistown a sample of the fencing that will go along theirs. There, why have we not seen a sample? I'm sorry, why have we not seen a sample? Oh, okay, okay. You said a sample, so I assumed it was a physical sample. Okay. And we, I do want to reiterate, you know, that the sound fence is important to us as high up as possible, you know, to block out the sign as the the sound officer mentioned. And aesthetically attractive, that what you were showing tonight is not attractive. The one that was described, as Terry had mentioned earlier, looks like wood, wood color is definitely a much more desirable in our neighborhood. I'm sure you've seen our neighborhood. It's not a turnpike neighborhood. So, you know, and it would, you know, we're worried about property value and what we see when we look out the window. Also, I just want to, oh, and the stormwater management you had mentioned is redirecting the water that's going above and beyond what you have to do for this addition, because I, we would appreciate that very much. I think because of the nineteen eighty two addition, it's necessary, and because you guys are expanding so much above and beyond what the township code allows, I think. And because you guys are expanding so much above and beyond what the township code allows, I think you should go above and beyond. I think the board of supervisors should make them go above and beyond because
They they are going above and beyond some of that groundwater remediation. They're trying their best to do that.
Yeah.
And they are going to have a large stormwater. Collection basin that's going to be located underneath the parking lot, the new parking lot.
Okay.
And so that is. Required now that they have, they have to have some stormwater mitigation.
Right, yeah, and I understand back in nineteen eighty two that
We didn't have that at the time. So what they're doing, they have gone above and beyond. They've worked, they have worked with Nate in that regard, and we appreciate the fact that they're doing that. And I think that they would be more likely to go above and beyond when they, where, when and where they can. I think that that's generally been the case.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then it seems like a lot of things, I mean, we, a lot of things are kind of outstanding. Oh, well, we don't have that. We don't know that. How many windows will be there? Who is going to be in the rooms exactly?
This is a preliminary, this is a preliminary, this is a preliminary approval situation. This is not final approval.
I understand that, but it seems
That's why we don't have some of this information.
Questions for even preliminary approval. I just, that's what I'm getting the field is. Everybody kind of feel that way. A lot of
Some of the issues aren't even land development issues, though. I mean, they're they're building permit issues, and they're not even something you have control over. So.
Right.
I think that myself and Nate would not put something before you if we felt it was not appropriate for preliminary plan.
Right, right.
We would not do that.
No.
Obviously, you guys are the ones that get to make that call, but we don't feel from our perspective that there are so many outstanding conditions that It's not right for you to act on with with the suggested motion, which does have conditions.
Right. And so. To that end, we do follow the advice of council. Kristen's done this a very long time, and so we would never. We would never just allow something to go through like this. And go to the permit process. This has to go through more steps as well. So it's not done yet.
Okay, so we will know exactly everything that's going to happen.
Derek is Make clear that some of these issues that your guys that you are raising are not land development issues. They are building permit, specific details on building permit plans, and even the board doesn't have any say over it. It wasn't included in the zoning approval, which there were twenty eight conditions. So Nate's office, if you read his letter, he's making sure they're complying with those twenty eight conditions to the extent they're carried over on your plan. But some of the other things in terms of windows on the barn, that wasn't something that's that's not part of land development. That's not something that they can control.
And so we can only ask that they'll be good neighbors and do some of these things that are above and beyond. And hope that they will be that good neighbor and will be mindful of the residents and their wishes.
It's no different than if a land develop, if a developer comes in and gets a twenty five lot subdivision approved. What color or how many windows around the house is not something that this board approves as part of land development? So if they needed some sort of conditional use approval, and that was a concern, and then the zoning hearing board. Or the board interconditional use, which is zoning approval imposed a condition, then it would be something they have the jurisdiction over. But if it's not part of a zoning approval, that detail is not considered land development issue. That's a building code, building permit issue.
And that's only up to the township zoning.
Well, it's not, I I wouldn't say it's so much up to us. It's, you have to follow the uniform construction code of Pennsylvania, so. Whatever that's laid out, their permits that they submit through their building process is going to have to be compliant with the UCC of this Commonwealth.
I just don't want them to walk away thinking that because it hasn't been fully addressed, it's going to be addressed as part of land development, because some of the issues you're raising are not land development issues.
They're just outside of anybody's control and you have to follow the UCC.
I won't call that outside anybody's control, but outside of this board's control, correct?
Correct.
It's more of an administrative thing, quite honestly.
I mean, because I do remember the planning commission saying that the board of supervisors had control over whether the windows were frosted.
And that's not exactly what they said. They said they weren't including it in their recommendation. If you wanted to ask the board to include it as part of their motion, you can ask, and the board will have to decide whether it does so. And whether or not, as I said earlier, whether or not that's a legal condition is different than whether they choose to impose it.
Okay.
So just, and let me just say this one more time. I think this is clear for everybody. I haven't said it yet. Land development approval. So so there's a burden of proof. The applicant has to present land development plans, in this case, that meet the zoning approval. And two, that meet the subdivision land development ordinance of township. The law says that if they do that, they're entitled to preliminary and final land development approval. So i- it's not that the board can impose any conditions because the neighbors are concerned about something. It has to be something that's required by the subdivision land development ordinance. Or in this case, also in the zoning decision. Those are the parameters within which the board is working.
But we can also ask
You can ask.
We can ask for certain things. And. We are going to ask for certain things, but we cannot require some of those things to happen. And again, we have to, we just, we have to work within the parameters of the law. We just, we don't have, there are certain powers we just do not have. And so we could only ask other people to be good neighbors. To our residents, because you share borders. And it's important for. Them to work with you, but it's also important for you to understand the law. And so we we do have certain parameters that we have to work within. So
Yeah, I I mean, I understand, and I read the township code inside, outside, and upside down when this is happening. And it boggles my mind how they have expanded exponentially and are allowed to expand even further. So we're, I don't think we're asking for too
Right, of course, of course. We understand what you're saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, if there are anybody, uh, any anybody else in the room here that has any questions, I'd ask you to stand up. Um, in the Zoom room, are there any questions at this time? Okay. So, um, I think then we could entertain a motion.
Let me ask a question, Madam Chair. Um, we, in our packet, we had. Uh, information about a motion, um, but then I've just been handed this sheet which looks.
It's the same thing, Mike, with the addition of that small paragraph in the small type.
Yeah, it's just one, the the second sentence of proposed condition three would be revised.
Um, let me ask a question.
Mm hmm.
Um. I haven't, let me, um, there is a. There, maybe it's a separate motion. I'm not seeing it here. There is a, there was a question about. A historic resources impact study. And is seeking an exemption from that, which I I will tell you right now, I'm supportive of. But I don't see it here in in this broad motion or for the preliminary land development. Is that a separate motion, Kristen?
Well, yeah, I wasn't sure how the board was going to view that. The planning commission supported it.
The planning commission.
Historical commission did not support it.
Oh, no.
They did not.
Did the historical commission even have a quorum?
I don't know that there is a communication.
So that is a moot point.
So so I will, I will say that I recall that there was a statement that came out about that. Saying that the, oh, um, the former zoning officer told me that the historical component. Of this particular. Land. This particular property has pretty much compromised.
Been altered over time, right.
Historic element.
It's been revised.
It's been revised enough times.
Before there was even any oversight.
Component is really no longer.
That was the position of the
Well, if we do that as a separate motion, I I mean, I I will, I I don't have anything in front of me, but I would, uh, whether we do that. Sooner or later. Uh, I I would like to act on that tonight as well.
Well, remember, Mike, that this is only a preliminary approval that we're going to vote on.
That hasn't escaped me. But that hasn't escaped me.
There, and there are a lot of things that are still up in the air. Uh, that will have to be dealt with before the final approval.
Well, no doubt about that. I mean, clearly, things like we talked about, the deed, recorded deeds, uh, restrictions, et cetera. Those are, those are. Tanamount to this entire process with the number of beds, et cetera. Those absolutely before. Uh, this board would act on any kind of a final.
I'm concerned about the fencing too. I I I want there to be a little bit more vetting of the
Yeah, before we bring the motion up, what what, how does the board feel about the fencing? Do we want to hold that out of this motion and and see? Uh, whether or not there are some other examples, softer examples that are available, I
More natural looking examples.
So the consensus of the board is we want to hold off on the fence. I mean, I'm seeing shaking heads.
That I'd like to hold off. That's what I would like to do, and I'd also like more information about the windows and. And I'd like to know how many windows are located and how many windows are going to be located. Um, that would be looking out over residents' properties.
What we're going to need, um, I should get this on, what we're going to need, probably from Kristen. Is a, um, if we do pass the preliminary approval. Um, that removes a great deal of the issues. From from board and would approve them. At the same time, we're going to need some kind of listing of the open issues so that we can address them. Can you deal with that?
Right now, or?
No, no, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and let me ask, let me ask Nate a question. Nate, can you come up?
Well, before
Because it deals with fencing. I want to make sure I don't read your letter. At which, again, is a proposed condition, that they have to comply with your letter as being that the fencing details have one hundred percent been approved. Is that?
No.
So if the board were to act on the motion, granting preliminary plan approval, subject to compliance to your letter, do you believe that they're officially approving the fencing?
No, the way my letter was written is such that, yeah, that's some more detail that's necessary. Like I said, texture, color selection, those those things still need to be sorted out. As we proceed towards final plan.
But to belt and suspend it, if we want to just make it crystal clear.
Okay.
That all of the fence details have to be formally vetted by the board.
So
With specific approval as part of final plan, that would, sounds like what I'm hearing.
Okay, so I'm I'm going to, in my capacity as chair, I'm going to call an executive session for the next ten minutes. We'll reconvene at nine fifteen. We have a few questions we have to ask our attorney.
And it's in the executive session is for
It's for legal reasons. So. Folks, if you can start coming back one in here, we're going to get started in a moment. You only needed a few minutes apparently, but. So come on back in if you're inclined. Sorry Zoom folks. Just needed a few minutes for clarification. I'm going to bring the meeting back to order. We needed to take a few minutes with our attorney to make sure that we had clarity on the motion and to make sure that. We knew what other parameters we had to work with. So that's been announced. Mike?
Yes, I'm going to.
There?
Madam Chair, I'm going to start with a motion put on the. Before my colleagues here, and this would be a motion. To grant the applicant an exemption. To chapter 240 of the zoning chapter of zoning. Regarding historic preservation and specifically. Section 240-38 dot 10. The Historic Resource Impact Study. And motion to grant an exemption. To the applicant. To, for the completion of this study, exempt them from completion of this historic resource impact study.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board regarding this motion? Are there any questions in the room or in the Zoom room? So on this motion, I'm going to call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you've been granted. Some relief, relief in the historic. Research that was going to be imposed on you. Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion on the floor.
How long we need, David? 10 minutes?
I'm going to take 10 minutes. It's going to put on my, my best radio voice here.
Great.
I move to grant preliminary land development approval for the preliminary land development plan applied for. The Malvern Institute by Chester Valley Engineers dated June 28th, 2021, last revised April 20th. 2022, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all comments outlined in the Pinoni Associates Review Letter dated May 25th, 2022 shall be addressed. To the satisfaction of the township engineer and the board and be reflected in the final plan. Number two, applicant shall submit and present the final landscape plan to the Township Conservancy Board. For its review and comment prior to presenting the final plan to the planning commission. Landscape plan shall address the comments in the Conservancy Board's review letter dated September 28th, 2021. Condition number three, applicant shall connect. Existing roof drains on the front of the main building into the proposed stormwater management system. The applicant shall design and install a small seepage bed. In the south, southernmost corner of the existing building to manage stormwater runoff. From the existing rear roof of the building following. The simplified design procedures in the East Ocean Township Stormwater Management Ordinance. Condition number four, applicant shall include the written protocols. Required by conditions 25 and 27 of the zoning decision on the final plan. Condition number five, all comments outlined in the Township Fire Marshal's Review Letter dated June 27th, 2022. Shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the fire marshal and the board. And be reflected in the final plan. Number six, applicant shall supply details. Of the fences and shall be approved by the board as part of the final plan approval. Number seven. Applicant shall have Wego Police Department. Review the types and locations of video cameras to be installed.
And provide comment on. Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, on the conditions that have been enumerated. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No.
No questions here from the board. Brian, Rick, do you have any questions?
Applicants shall have the Wego Police Department comment on the locations and types of video cameras. To be approved by the board.
And again, meant the zoning decision identified where the video camera. But there was comment and I think you agreed to it that they wanted the police to comment upon exactly where they're going to be located. In terms, because you're supposed to put them on a land development plan based on the zoning decision.
That, that is correct, although my comment was that the. The camera company would come out and specify exactly where those would go. It would be shown on the land development plan. I don't know that the, we don't have a problem with the, the police department looking at where they would go and commenting on it.
That's all we're asking.
We're asking for them to comment on it.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have a problem with that. I mean, they're, they kind of have to go where they have to go, but we have no problem with that, with that understanding.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian. That's the seven conditions. That's, that's it.
Okay. And do we need to open this up any further or no?
Go question.
Nothing further. So on the motion. That David read. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 And there are no. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kristen, for coming on. Thanks, Nate. See y'all later. Thank you. Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, folks.
And then we're going to go ahead and continue on with township business. So we're going to. Shuffle things up so we can get through business quickly. We're going to go to see the, consider the deer management hunting program.
Let me, Madam Chair, man, I will for a moment call. The remaining. Resident we hear also happens to be municipal authorities.
Yes.
Member. Phil Mayer, and I wonder if we could talk about the sewer matter now while Phil is here. He's waited. He's got other things he.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, then we'll. All right, we'll, we'll keep with the then, yes. We'll consider the sewer rates and proposed capital plan. We, we.
Well, I, I just wanted to introduce it because I, I mentioned it to Phil.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, now it is.
Madam Chair, with regard to the. Matter of considering the 2022 sewer rates and the proposed capital plan. We have a memorandum from our Director of Finance, Dave Ware. Indicating the condition and the projected condition of the sewer fund. Operational, but primarily the capital reserve fund for the sewer. System. And there is an indication that the. With the projects that are in front of us now, West Town Pump Station with the Hershey's Mill Estates. Issue with the failed main. And the, the cost of those. And looking ahead to the aging of our infrastructure. Also the fact that our sewer rates have not kept up with the CPI over the last eight or 10 years. Of variance between 4%. Of the, of what the rates have gone up and 13% of what the CPI has been. Again, contingency about an aging infrastructure and also. The need for the sewer reserve fund to be sustainable as we go forward with our system. And maintaining it properly. There is an indication for some. Not, not insubstantial increase in sewer rates. The board is not, and I don't think we, as a board, were ready to decide on that tonight. But to introduce the subject. The. The potential is there for an increase that could be substantial on a, on one-time basis, or we could extend it over a period of a few years. We may get some further analysis from Dave Ware on it. But it is pretty clear in our minds at this point that an increase in the sewer rates is going to have to occur. Now, one of the items that has come up and it's reason it is being introduced tonight. Initially with an intent to proceed in some capacity with the sewer rate increases because of the schedule we have. For the annual review of sewer rates and setting the rates going forward for the next year. The, based on the timing there. I'm not sure what kind of a window we have, but I believe that the board would like a little bit more time to consider this. And perhaps bring this up at our next meeting. To further allow us to assimilate this. And see if we have some cogency amongst our thinking for a consideration of rate increases. Within the confines of, of the schedule that. The Director of Finance and, and our. Financial operations have kept over time. So that's about the sum total of it at the moment. I just want to introduce it, Madam Chair, and see if we could defer this now. To the next meeting for further consideration about any actual increase. Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. I want Phil to know and should be made public. I don't think anybody on the board is opposed to refurbishing the West Town, yeah, the West Town Way Station. Or repairing the Hershey Mill Estates break. Our concern is. How much money we will have left over in the sewer capital reserve fund. Prelimarily, Dave has said it could be the $2.3 million. We have to ascertain that and then we have to figure out whether we want to. To raise the user fees, user fees, I said. To bulk the, the reserve up to the 4.6 million that Dave has suggested. Really, our concern is with how quickly we want to raise the user fees on people who. Because of inflation. Because we may have a recession, we want to be careful and not raise the fees too quickly. But we want to have the money available if we need it. So that's our concern.
I'll second Mike's motion to table this until we have further information. Regarding the. Time of period and phasing in the increase and, and some additional calculations. So I'll second that motion.
Okay, I, I think that it is time, unfortunately. I'm going to say it, some prior boards have pushed this off to us and it's not a decision that we make lightly. To have to increase a rate for anybody. But the fact is, is that we do need to consider the fact that we are not fully funded for our capital reserve. In the event we had a catastrophic incident occur like the Hershey's Mill Estates situation. We also have to look at the legislation that's currently working its way through Harrisburg. Where there are going to be increasing mandates on testing, further testing. Tightening of the standards and they're also going to require anyway that we have. An itemized inventory of our systems and. And a, but a means to fund it, pay for it if, if, when it goes, when it comes to the end of life. So I think the other consideration we have to talk about next month is going to be end of life. Study of our system throughout the township. And I think that's something that we at least need to. Be aware of cost-wise, how much that could run us. Is it something that can be done in-house? Can we speed it up if that's the case? Or is it something that we have to outsource? So I'd really rather see us do, do it in, in-house, of course, because it would save us a ton of money, but. I don't know if we have the ability to do that or equipment or time really. So Dave, do you want to make a few comments?
Um, couple of comments. So $2.3 million would get us up to 100% sewer cap reserve needed to refund. To basically replace the Ridley Creek Treatment Plant inventory as well as all the pump houses. Does not address the lines underneath us 200 miles or so. We do have projects slated for this year that have not been budgeted ahead of time. To pay for which are $185,000 additional for the Ridley Creek Ultraviolet Disinfection System. Which is required to have palatable potable drinking water. West Ocean Sewer Thawery Capital Payments Improvements, 215,000, which are not covered by ARPA or Bon Money. Hershey Mill State Stewart Sewer Replacement Project, 550,000. And a projected shortfall in revenue of $155,686.91. Just those current projects plus the shortfall in revenue projected is 1.105 million dollars. Which if we don't act on, we will just be delaying it and seeing where we come out, but just wanted to make those points.
Thank you, Dave.
Could this be on our next agenda?
Yes, it's something that we.
Derek, how do you, how do you see us?
We'll have to bill, we'll have to change the billing in fourth quarter and we'll change, have to change the resolution to do so. Right, Chris?
Is it ordinance? It's just a resolution.
Chapter 188 of the Township Code says that the rates will be recalculated every July.
So it's an ordinance? Okay.
If, if we, we meet, we're meeting on the 21st of July next.
21, 19th. It doesn't specify what, what days in July.
Not day. We typically send the billing out the 15th of July. But if you delayed it.
It's not a huge difference.
Survive if we waited until.
We have to give residents 45 days to pay according to an ordinance. So we would have to adjust the.
Yeah.
Or we could just do day. Or we could just not adjust it. For this quarter.
That's something.
And make it an amendment to the resolution.
Yeah, Dave could comment on in the interim what impact that may or may not have relative to this current scenario. And, and that's one, that's one possible outcome on the 19th. The other is figuring out a plan going forward, starting with the fourth quarter.
I would like to make a request then of Derek and Dave. I don't, I didn't know about this till Friday. I got the packet on Saturday and I was shocked. I don't like to be surprised, guys. I'd like to hear about what we can do, what options we have well before the 19th, if that's at all possible.
Understood. And this has been a process. I had to go to the municipal authority to get their recommendations first. That was last month and then there was.
Dave, I've read your memo. I'm impressed. It's, it's, it's all here. It's just, that was a shock Saturday to open that package.
I understand. I apologize for the short-term notice.
No apologies are needed, but it would be nice to, before the 19th, to have a couple of alternatives.
Okay.
Okay, um, would you like to make any comments while you're here? Okay.
I wanted you to hear.
Okay. Boy, yeah, please. Are there any questions from our Zoom room? Then on the motion table this until next meeting, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Can I just clarify? We're.
Yes.
So we're tabling, but on the 45 days. If we don't give them 45 days, we technically have to change the ordinance, not a resolution. So we probably should just give them the extra time.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. All right. So consider the deer management hunting program resolution.
I would make it.
Madam Chair, if I could, the draft motion, there should be a correction. In the draft motion, it's to approve the 2022-2023.
Yes.
Deer Management Resolution, which is Resolution 2022-12. And the following, deer management groups to participate in the 2022 Township Archery Hunting Program. And everything thereafter is okay.
Okay.
All right, Madam, and it is Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the 2022-23 Deer Management Program Resolution, which is Resolution 2022 number.
12.
12. And the following deer management groups to participate in the 2022 Township Archery Hunting Program. Chester County Trackers will manage the Grand Oak and Mill Creek Open Space Area. Mainline Whitetail Managers will manage the Sibley Open Space Area. Keystone Archers will manage the Bowtree and Clubfire Open Space as well as the Wentworth Open Space Area.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any questions regarding this?
I have a question. Do we get a, do we, do we just let them do this? Do we get money for this? Do we pay them to do it? What's the deal?
No.
Volunteer, they just go ahead.
There's no money involved. Yeah, I mean.
And they clean up the open space that they're in.
Yes.
So. Okay.
And it's to manage the deer population, so.
All right, so. That's a good number.
I see a couple of my neighbors' names are on the list, so.
Are there any questions from the Zoom room since we don't have any live participants in person? Okay, see none? Call the question. Those in favor? Okay, see none? Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, consider the second and final escrow release for thirteen oh three Goshen Parkway, the Jable folks, so.
This is pretty, the next two are same, basically, pretty straightforward escrow releases of projects that are pretty much completed. And obviously, the developer looking for the escrow back.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion and consensus for items D and E.
Yep.
That would first in the motion, consider approval of the second and final escrow release for thirteen oh three Goshen Parkway to build as recommended by the staff.
Yep.
And second part of the motion is to consider the escrow release for nine thirty-two North Chester Road as recommended by staff.
Second motion.
Okay, are there any questions? None, see none, any in the Zoom room? See no questions, I'm going to call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike, for consolidating that. Consider replacement of the sewer cleaners machine. The Jetter has been really really, it's spent. It's, it's about fifteen years old. It has been paid for, it's budgeted for, and this is, it's going to be kept, this one's going to be kept as a spare, but it's just not doing quite the job.
With this, we have to post the old one on.
Yeah. He said he would consider selling it through Co-Stars if he can get a decent amount for it. Yeah, otherwise it could be a spare, but it sounds like he's going to try to get some money for it.
Is the amount of the two bids, is that net of the fifty or that's not?
Yeah, it's an expensive piece of equipment.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I rec, or I'd like to make the motion that we award Golden Equipment in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. And also, I'd like to add to that if Mark wants to sell the old machine, that he can do so on municipal.
Second motion.
Oh, great. Okay, any questions regarding the purchase of the Jetter? See none? I'm going to call the question, those in favor of purchasing the Jetter and putting the old one on municipal if needed?
Aye.
Consider purchase of new fire alarm control panel, Derek?
Yeah, this is, Mark and I talked about this last week. Currently, the panel currently covers District Court, Public Works Department, and the Police Department. It is out of date, and the issue is there's, where it's located, it's, there's multiple alarms all the time over there, and it's triggered by you know, different cell escape alarms and things of that nature. So what we're proposing here is to update a much-needed control panel, but also in the process, move it to Public Works Department. So it's just a little bit easier for us to reset as a group and, and have control of, because right now it's not in Public Works. So it's sort of a twofold. We purchased new equipment because the other stuff's getting old, but then we also are moving the location of it because it's just a more convenient location for our guys.
Great. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that they can purchase the new alarm panel for eight thousand dollars.
Thank you. Terrific. Any questions regarding the panel? See none? I want to call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Purchase of park cameras. So there have been a lot of smash and grabs.
Yes.
Last week.
Yep, and that's exactly where this is stemming from. There's been a lot. We've been talking about this for a while. I think, as you might see the date, Jason wrote this back in May, so I guess we just didn't get in gear, but given the summer months and the increase in, in some smash and grabs at the park, we wanted to get the ball rolling on this.
My, my only question about this one is, of course, we're looking at a monthly, annual cost of operational cost of fifteen hundred dollars a year. And then the, of course, the project installation is eighty-three eighty, that's the capital cost. If it's not in this year's budget, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to approve it. I understand the, what's being described here. This is the first I've really gotten a sense of what's going on. Kind of coming back to where John, John has just commented on the sewer. This kind of hit me. I don't want to hold back on safety, but I'm just wondering where the dollars are going to come from, and maybe you can tell me that short of us putting it in the twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay.
Is it in the budget, Dave?
These cameras, no.
No. I, I'm with Mike then. Could we, could we send this back and ask Jason to?
We can table it and come up with a financial plan.
Reallocation of existing budget.
Do we need all of the cameras? Could we cut, we don't down the number of cameras?
Yeah, we don't need this many cameras potentially. We don't necessarily need four license plate cameras. There should be one at each, one at each entrance.
Have the police review this?
That's going to be my question too, Mike. I'm in favor of just passing as is, but I'd like the police to comment, especially if we're having them comment on other.
Yeah, you know, Cody, that's a good idea. We could have the police, excuse me, Madam Chair, if we, if we could have the police comment in the interim and then have Derek and Dave work with Jason to see if we can reallocate something existing in the budget and have those two components ready for the nineteenth. Maybe we'll be in a position to consider.
I agree, especially during the summer months when there's a lot of.
Sure.
You know, the other thing is sometimes WeGo will put cameras up, so maybe we can talk to them about putting something up temporarily.
Sure, let me get this, I'll get this to the chief tomorrow.
All right.
I, I would move then that we table this.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll just add that this is also, thinking about all the kids, the park too, it's not just for the license plates of the smash and grab.
I understand that.
Just so the public knows that this is also to keep eyes on.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why I, I think that we need to reach out to WeGo kind of urgently to see if they can get something up on our behalf right away.
The other concern I have, I shouldn't have this on, the other concern I have is who's going to watch the cameras?
They may be just recording and not monitoring cameras, so they may be recording, and then if there's an incident that they would review the, I don't know this. Would they just be reviewing the camera to see, to say, yeah, here was the one.
Okay.
The incident has happened.
Yeah.
But maybe.
In that instance, what we're talking about then is catching somebody who's already done something. And I'm taking Dave's comment on kids.
Yeah, I think, I think we have the option. If it's just like the ones in the pump station, they could do both. So like Mark can actually get on and watch live, real time, and then we can also be recording. And then those license plates are to target.
Yeah, a lot of it is about evidence too.
Sure.
Stacking.
Okay, sure, yeah, and, and I don't, I don't disagree that we don't need them. I think we do need them.
We can confirm all of that as part of this for the next meeting.
Yeah, just make sure, like, I'd like to make sure the chief has.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Let's, and ask her, she can put some cameras up in the meantime.
All right.
Even if temporarily.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to call the question then, those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
And consider moving the October fourth meeting date from the calendar. This conflicts with Yom Kippur, which is a holy, a holy day for the Jewish community. And we also have four consecutive board meetings in September, so we probably all could use a little bit of a break.
Yeah, I'll just add, Madam Chair, we actually, it's interesting this conflicted with Yom Kippur, because I was going to suggest scrapping this meeting anyway. We did that last year, if anybody recalls, because we had basically four or five weeks in a row discussion, regular meeting agenda items as well as budget items. So when we got to October, we thought that it was a little extreme to have six weeks in a row, so that coupled with the fact that it is in a conflict with Yom Kippur, we were, well, I was wondering here if the Board wanted to scrap the October fourth meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we remove the October fourth meeting from our calendar.
Second motion.
Woo, okay. All right, so any questions, any comments?
Aye.
All right, call the question, aye. Michael's early, aye, standing issues, Hershey's Mill DM project?
I, sorry, I'm a little slow right now, it's getting late. I feel like everybody's about to have a draw fight. So, good progress at Hershey's Mill, unlike the other one, so we're, we're moving right along, the boardwalk's actually moving along quite nicely. We're starting to get vegetation growing in that bottom area where our public works, the part was, so all in all, really, really great progress, looks great.
Yeah, we're on target for August, like we've been saying.
I think it's great, because it looked good today, I mean, yeah.
So in that vein.
I'm going to do the Milltown Dam Project update.
If I could just back up to Hershey's Mill one second, does the Board want me to explore any kind of ribbon-cutting date or anything of that nature for this park?
Yes.
Yeah, why not? Not Labor Day, that's all.
Yeah. So basically sometime.
Sometime late August, early September.
Okay.
Early September is Labor Day.
Well, after Labor Day.
I'll be, I'll be away the week of Labor Day that week, but that doesn't matter.
The week before, yeah, start.
You can call in.
Yeah, yeah.
I can come back.
FaceTime you.
Okay.
Um, and if you can get back to us with a couple of dates, we'll pick, we'll pick a date.
Okay.
And then there's the Milltown Dam Project update. I sent an email to the DEP today, and I left lots of messages for people all over the state. So I'm doing what I can.
Well, we appreciate you doing the extra outreach.
I, I've reached out to a couple of state reps as well, so.
Can I add one, can I add one thing that too, that Mark Miller also just started the mosquito relief with the suggestion that John mentioned?
Yes.
He just did it, hundred, hundred, yeah.
Yeah, he got a hundred dunks from the county, he's going to sink them like John suggested.
Oh, terrific.
And so hopefully the Milltown.
Let's have a ceremony for that.
You can coordinate that one.
Okay, under any other matter, anybody else have any other matter? No? Public comment?
No.
Nobody's around, and liaison reports are none. Mark Miller gave us a whole report of what he did, it was terrific.
Yeah, and I, he's not here, but I'm sure he's going to, listen, I very much appreciate the pictures, Dave.
I do too. He does a great job.
Madam Chair, I'd love to make the motion to adjourn.
Second, okay.
That was a jeopardy, he was right there, I was right there.